Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the specially scheduled Monday, July 1st, 2024, 6:00 PM meeting of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. As the Chair, Robert Tetro, I am opening this meeting. We are currently at Auburn Town Hall, 104 Central Street, in the Planning Board Room this evening on the second floor. If anybody is interested in joining by phone, you can do so at 1-646-749-3112. You can join with access code 944571349, or you can join on your computer by going to globalgotomeeting.com and joining at 944571349 as well. So I have some paperwork that I, as usual, have to do. We'll get through this as efficiently and as quickly as possible. So my first is the script, and for the Zoning Board of Appeals' participation script, confirming member access, this is the open meeting of the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals, is being operated as a hybrid format under Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022. Republicans, join the meeting remotely again by calling 1-646-749-3112 and entering access code 944571349, or by joining by computer by visiting globalgotomeeting.com. In the upper right corner, a box will appear, and you can enter 944571349, and it will join the meeting. All supporting materials that are provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Again, as a preliminary matter, my name is Robert Tetro, and I am the Chair. Permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda participating remotely are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Vice Chair Michael Maron.
Present.
Richard Cuzzi.
Present.
Mr. Chacolo.
Present.
Ms. Roach.
Present.
Ms. Bush.
Present.
Ryan Garabedian. And Ryan will not be with us this evening. Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Timothy Crap, Health Inspector. Okay. Do I have anybody else from the town that want to identify themselves to the purpose of the meeting?
Jesse Averka, present.
Jesse Averka, thank you very much. That will be official title as Land Use Coordinator. And I believe we also have, from the town side, Ms. Dallin Coyle, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Excellent, okay. So we have identified everyone that is present with us this evening. I'm identifying any issues or anyone calling in on the remote. I see no one calling in currently, although we do have an IT professional at a third-party location to call in and verify if, in the effect, we have to have any phone issues.
Everything sounds great on my end.
I'm sorry?
Everything sounds great on my end.
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and read the violation. So this again comes from, gotta stop from the front page here, Mr. Alan Rafferty at 18 Paul Street, Auburn, Massachusetts, 01501, 774-722-2881. Email adrafferty@outlook.com. Individual use for the city of town. Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals is the name of the public body. Specific person is Robert J. Tetro and Megan Roach. Date of alleged violation, June 20th, 2024. I'll be happy to read through this for you. An intentional violation of the mass open meeting law occurred at the June 20th, 2024 meeting of the Auburn Zoning Board. At the 11-minute mark of the YouTube copy that, of that night's broadcast, and it has a YouTube link in there, that I really can't read all those symbols, the Chairman is interrupted by the town's cable TV director and told, you can see the text with closed captions turned on, that there were audio problems with remote access connection. In other words, the remote participants could not hear the meeting. Earlier in the meeting, it was reflected to the fact that the two remote participants could not respond when they were asked to by the Chairman. He just shrugs this occurrence off. In addition, when told of the problem by the ACT-TV manager, he and the Vice Chair state that they have a disclaimer written on the posted agenda saying, "Note: If technological problems interrupted the virtual meeting, the meeting will continue in person." The same disclaimer is not posted on the public hearing notice. The decision to not cancel the public meeting due to the audio technical issues is in violation of the open meeting law that recommends pausing the meeting to correct the issue or canceling the meeting altogether. There is evidence that two people who refused, uh, two people were refused participation. In addition, the disclaimer that the meeting would continue regardless of remote access issues is not, is not a known legal exception to preventing a violation of the open meeting law. Further, Attorney Megan Roach, who is a ZBA Board Member, had recommended to the Board that it would be a legal workaround. The actions of Roach and Tetro are delivered acts to circumvent the open meeting law that requires complete access for remote participants. Further, this is the third complaint I have filed against the ZBA, and despite this, they continue with this illegal behavior. So, um, the complaintant's instructions here, or requests, I should say, reschedule and recall hearings that were done at the meeting, notify all parties that their granted permits are now void, read my complaint at the next meeting, and admit there was a violation, notify select board immediately about my complaint, receive repeat open meeting law training, and publicize your test results. The two accused Board Members should resign immediately. So that was signed by Mr. Rafferty. That is my two-page complaint. And then I have a prepared response from the Town Attorney as we pervade through all this information. I would be happy to read that. Please note this is dated today, July 1st, 2024. All members and parties concerned and present have copies of this in their packets, to be clear. And it is addressed to me, Robert Tetro, Chair, Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals, Town, uh, Auburn Town Hall, 104 Central Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, in reference to the opening meeting law complaint of June 24th, 2024, Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Dear Chairman Tetro, as you are aware, the Town of, of the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals received an open meeting law complaint on June 24th, 2024, in which the resident of the town, Alan Rafferty, alleges a violation of the open meeting law. Specifically, Mr. Rafferty alleges that the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals committed an intentional violation of the mass open meeting law when, at a point approximately 11 minutes into the broadcast of the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, there may have been some technical difficulties with the GoToMeeting broadcast of such meeting. It is my understanding that there was some sort of confusion at the meeting about whether or not the feed cut out and whether the individuals who were non-responsive on the GoToMeeting platform were experiencing a loss of signal, or whether there was simply no one on the lines to respond to the Chair's inquiries. Regardless, it appeals that there is at least some evidence that there was a technical difficulty. After a discussion of the disclaimer, the Zoning Board of Appeals has on agenda, which states that if there are any kind of technical difficulties, the Board will continue the hearing in person. The Board continued with the hearing. As the only recording of the meeting accessible to this office is the town's cable channel, uh, this, for the record, what they're saying is, they went to the YouTube channel and they rewatched the meeting, so I just want to be clear about that. As to the only recording of the meeting accessible to this office is the town's cable channel recording, done separately from GoToMeeting, this office has been unable to determine whether there was an interruption in the GoToMeeting platform that would have necessitated a cessation of the meeting until such technical difficulties were resolved. It is certainly not clear from the town's recording of the meeting whether there were technical difficulties that would require correction. Given the circumstances involving this matter, it is my recommendation that the Zoning Board of Appeals meet within 14 days of June 24th, hence we are right now, with the complaint to discuss these matters. As such, meaning the ZBA needs to determine if any of the hearings or other business conducted at such meeting was interrupted by technical difficulties with the GoToMeeting feed, which would have prevented any virtual participants from participating in such meeting. If any time the GoToMeeting feed was compromised, or if you were unable to determine whether such feed was compromised, it is my recommendation to the Board take a vote to nullify such hearing, vacate any decisions, and inform the affected parties that the Board will reschedule any hearings, uh, that experienced technical difficulties at a future meeting. It does not necessarily have to be at the next one, because if there is an issue with posting those corrected changes. It is my further understanding that such meeting in the Zoning Board of Appeals took a vote to discontinue virtual, uh, vote to discontinue virtual meetings moving forward. I recommend that this Board of Appeals determine whether such a vote was broadcast appropriately, and again, if there were any technical difficulties with the GoToMeeting platform, that they may have prevented any virtual participants from participating in such a meeting, that the vote to discontinue the virtual or hybrid meetings of the Zoning Board of Appeals be retaken. With regards to the proposed actions the Board of Appeals should take, as recommended by Mr. Rafferty's open meeting law complaint form, I believe the action prescribed herein is sufficient to address these concerns. If, after the hearing on this date, July 1st, 2024, to discuss the complaint, Mr. Rafferty is displeased with the Board's actions, he can proceed by transmitting his complaint to the Attorney General's Office. After the hearing is conducted this evening, this office will work with the Board to provide Mr. Rafferty with the summary of the actions taken by the Board in response to the June 2012, 24th, 2024 open meeting law complaint. For submission, uh, for the submission to the Attorney General's Office, should he see it fit to do so. Thank you for your further attention to this matter. Please do not hesitate to contact this office should you have any further questions or concerns, or if you wish to discuss this matter further, and that is signed by the town's attorney. Okay, so. My next, I'm sorry that you have to listen to my voice as I read through all these things. I apologize to all of you.
Not necessarily, you're doing fine.
Okay, so the next one I have to do through is, we're gonna read through the response, and then I'm going to address each of the concerns as we approach them in the letter. I think that would be the most efficient way to do this if everybody's agreeable. So, um, again, addressed to myself, 104 Central Street, open meeting law complaint. As you are aware, the Town, the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals received an open meeting law complaint on June 2024, which resident of the Town of Auburn, Alan Rafferty, alleged the violation of the open meeting law. Specifically, Mr. Rafferty alleged that the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals committed an intentional violation of the mass, mass open meeting law when, at a point approximately 11 minutes into the broadcast, the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, there may have been some technical difficulties with the GoToMeeting broadcast. It is my understanding there was some confusion in the meeting about whether or not the feed was cut out, or whether individuals who were non-responsive to the GoToMeeting were experiencing any technical difficulties on their own. Regardless, it appears those, at least some evidence for technical difficulties. So after discussion of the disclaimer, the Zoning Board of Appeals has on its agenda, which states that if there are any technical difficulties, Board will continue with the hearing in person. The Board can continue. So what we're gonna do is address these things in the following part two here. As the only recording of the accessible, again, it says, certainly not clear from the town's recording of the meeting whether there were technical difficulties that require correction. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna determine that the Zoning Board of Appeals needs to determine whether any of the hearings or other business conducted at such meeting was interrupted by technical difficulties, or the GoToMeeting feed would have any prevented any virtual participants from, uh, participants, excuse me, from such a hearing or meeting. I think there was sufficient evidence to understand that it's a possibility that may have been a feed interruption on that. Would you agree with all of that, I hope, right?
Yep.
So, um, it is my recommendation to take a vote to, so, uh, we have a vote to nullify the hearings that have, um, potentially been affected by any technical difficulties. So we have the one from 159 Melvin Road, and we have the other from, um, the accessory use apartment. Um, do we need to read those into the record, or can we just proceed as is?
Um, I think, uh, to be clear, for the, um, agenda items, just so we capture all of them, agenda items from June 20th meeting, see what I mean?
Right. You just wanna cover it as, as a blanket statement, you think it'll be the best way?
Yeah, I think that, that should be enough.
Okay. Um, so I, but I will read all four, all the action steps in again, though. Um, so we did determine that there was any, that we have a possibility of an interruption in the meeting. Uh, we are gonna nullify the hearing, vacate decisions, and inform the affected parties that they'll be rescheduled at a future date. Uh, the vote to discontinue any virtual or hybrid meetings is up something that we'll deal with next. All right, so let's take it one step at a time here. We have determined that we have, um, hearings that may have been interrupted. Do I have a motion to, or a recommendation on the floor to vacate the hearings from the, um, June 24th meeting?
June 20th.
June 20th, I apologize, thank you very much for that.
Chairman, before I make a motion, I just want to understand, as I read the corrective actions, where, where to determine if there were any hearings that were interrupted?
Correct.
Not the inability for the hearing to proceed and for us to take a vote, but if, in fact, they were interrupted? I, I don't see that they were interrupted, but I, I understand what we need.
Okay. I mean, we, I, we don't have to have a motion on the floor to, I'm more than happy to have a discussion on this.
Yeah, no, I don't wanna, I don't wanna hold this there for my own, my personal bias on, on how I interpret Mr. Hennigan's comments, and maybe you might have some more insight into that, but when I, when I look at it, did it interrupt the business that we conduct? It, it's, it's certainly a possibility that there was an inability for someone to participate based on the technical feed, but the question that's been before us, if I'm gonna be tedious, because it's my nature, is that if it interrupted the business, I don't see that interrupting the business, and I'm not trying to challenge what we're trying to accomplish, but the business was conducted, the votes were taken, and the inability for someone to participate in that, is that, is that what we're considering, how we could have interrupted?
I think that's it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see your point, I think, for sake of just getting this across immediately.
Is it maybe semantical?
I don't disagree. I think that if you go back and re-watch the meeting, in the beginning, when we first typically ask if there's anyone else on the call, prior to being, as I did go back and watch the meeting, obviously, there, we had asked the callers to identify themselves prior to being told that there was a technical difficulty, they did not, um, make themselves known. I think at first we thought it might have been one of our alternate members. Nobody replied, and that happened prior to the interruption. Again, I think, for the purpose of doing the thing that is going to be the most transparent, um, I probably would be prepared to move forward with a motion. Do I think that is 100% necessary? Probably not, but again, I think for transparency for both us, for the town, I think Attorney Hennigan thinks that's probably the most prudent thing to do, um, but I guess I would agree with Mr. Maron. Um, I don't know that it necessarily interrupted our business in the normal course of things. We, we had one hearing that we knew continued, so there was nobody here for them. Our other hearing was a homebaker coming and asking, uh, is there a possibility she had a neighbor there that wanted to be heard? Of course, there is. Uh, do I believe that to be true? No, I don't, but I guess we don't know for sure.
And I should, thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for indulging me as always. I mean, it may be that I'm just, I'm just looking at Mr. Hennigan's, uh, overly conservative, um, that, that, what is he specifically asking versus what we were able to conduct. But having said that, um, I, I would, uh, Ms. Chairman, I would make a motion, um, as stated, um, to action the nullification of the votes previously taken on such date, and to reconduct those hearings.
I think we can, well, the one concern I will address is that, I think we only have to do the first one, the 159 Melvin Road, because we left the second one open, that hearing is still open for public comment now.
I agree with you.
The second one's still open for public comment now.
No, I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, but point of, um, for your point of clarification, because the second hearing that's continuing to be an open, um, we took no questions, we took no comments.
Right.
And so, so there wouldn't have been.
There was no action, anything.
There wa, there wasn't anything action, um, so I would agree with you. I think that that, we, we likely, we likely do not need to, uh...
I just wanted to be clear, so we're having a vote to make sure that our intent is clear, that's all. If the Board sees fit to do with the whole thing, that's great, I have no problem with that, I just wanna make sure that we are looking at the 159 Melvin Road, looking at the, the Wood application, and then, you know, the vacate, uh, and have the rediscussion on the vote.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that the, the hearing that we conducted and took the vote on, um, I think is the one that has potential based on Mr. Hennigan's recommendation of, of, um, of what we had discussed. I think that the, the secondary hearing that we had that remains open, um, there, there's no additional action, and there's no risk, um, as far as what was determined to continue that hearing. I think it needs to be part of this corrective action.
All right, any other comments, remember?
Done this in the past, we read, we read the meeting because of, you know, the audios.
Mm-hmm.
Running through it again if need be.
Okay.
I think it's unnecessary, but we'd definitely do it.
Right.
Satisfied, everyone, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Chacolo, sir?
Do we still have a motion on the floor?
We, uh, have, not yet, but I, well, we began a motion, but it can't turn to a discussion, so I think it would be fair, I give every member now an opportunity if they wanted to add any comments.
If there is a motion going to be put forward, my comment would be that there is no supporting data that we have, or that the town has been able to discern, that there was a technical situation, especially on our end.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I somehow would like that to appear, um, with the documentation from this meeting. I know it's stated right here, that there is no data.
Mm-hmm.
But with the documentation from this particular meeting, I would like to see that included in that document.
Okay, I mean, I think we can make that as a condition, but do we have not to have that ability if we're gonna vacate it, and we need some backing to back it up? I think we can do that, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that the points were taken from, from my perspective, Ms. Chairman, I think that we're, you know, this, this to me is a, is a risk profile. Um, you know, is, is there a reasonable risk, um, that during that decision, um, someone's voice wasn't able to be heard? Um, and, and so, if we risk profile it, I think the risk is low, but the risk, can we rule that risk out 100% completely? No, and so I think that's what we're here to accomplish, and so from that perspective, I understand what Mr. Chacolo is saying, but at the same token, um, there wouldn't be any data.
That's right.
It would, we'd be absent of anything to validate that someone was, had the inability to come forward, you know, and express what they want.
That is what I would like to see, um, within this, the decision and documentation from this Board.
Okay, I'm gonna refer to the town for that, to make sure, I think that's probably a little bit out of my purview.
Thank you very much. Dallin Coyle, Director of Inspection Services and Development. So, um, when our office received the, um, open meeting law complaint, um, I did, um, reach out and speak with the Town Clerk, um, and also our, um, Cable, um, Cable Access Director, Mr. Hugo, um, to talk about that evening and, uh, the audio issues that, uh, that were brought up. Um, so as you can see from the meeting, um, when you watch it back, um, I believe, uh, Mr. Hugo, uh, identified something around the 11-minute mark, um, to the Board. Up until that point, through a, um, generous discussion, um, with Mr. Hugo, he did not realize that there was an audio problem until just about that time. Um, there were, um, some explanations on why there may have been audio problems, um, so as you know, um, there are certain equipment that has to happen in order for the audio and the video, um, to happen for the remote meeting. Um, you'll notice that the podium is no longer in the select board room, um, that podium is being, um, repaired, rehabbed, uh, and that there was some equipment that was within that podium, um, so that may have, um, to some of the, um, the audio, um, issues, um, and additionally, there was some software that needed to be updated. Apparently, um, we had, uh, some inclement weather that week, some pretty strong storms that, again, nobody knows for certain, but he believes that that may have been an explanation why there were audio problems. So he, he worked with our IT department to actually reinstall the software, um, to get that up and running. Um, so the electrical storm, the podium, um, missing, um, the, the piece, and since that time, since that, um, audio problem was detected at that meeting, there were no meetings conducted until all those fixes were in place by, um, Cable Access and IT. So, um, there were audio problems detected, but they were not detected at the start of the meeting. Obviously, we would have halted and addressed those, but those did not come up until around the first hearing or the, um, when it's closing on the first hearing. So, um, it's not exactly clear when those problems were identified, but as soon as we knew about the problems, obviously, um, that's when it came to his attention. So, um, hopefully, taking these steps, um, will keep us on track. Um, and as you know, this evening, we do have our IT monitoring, um, remotely, um, to make sure that the entire meeting is heard and, um, and can go through, so if any bend or, if the public wants to join, they can do that. So hopefully, that gives you some explanation.
Can I ask a small question before?
Sure, I can.
The Chair, of course. Um, if we decide to, uh, void the last meeting and go forward, can we request that the meeting on July 18th be placed at this room?
Yeah.
Sure. Um, as long as it's, uh, not previously booked, I can, I could put that request into the Town Clerk tonight.
Okay. I understand the reason for the big room, in certain instances, we've certainly filled that room a number of times, um, but I think, as long as, you know, everyone agrees, I think, to go forward in this room, um, at least while we are still continuing with the remote access, I think is, is a better way to handle things. They seem to have almost no difficulties in this room, um, and I think to, especially if we're gonna redo it, get it right in here, and if we decide to vote again, to get rid of the remote, like we did last time, if that's what we decide, then I think certainly they're happy to go back to the big room, but, um, I think to kind of put this to bed, I think we would like to request, is there enough, if we decide to redo the meeting, is there enough time to notice everyone to rehear this on July 18th at our next meeting?
I believe so, um, okay. Is the, uh, Jesse, is the advertising, something?
I think we would still have enough time, but I'm not certain, I'd have to look at it tomorrow.
Okay.
Figure out if we do have enough time.
And do you know, has Ms. Belcito Wood, who had asked for the last meeting, has she withdrawn her application to thus, thus far?
Um, I will double check. Um, I know that she, I know that she has been in, um, the office and spoken with the, um...
Gary.
Right, Building Commissioner's Own Enforcement Officer, so I know that after that meeting, um, there has been, at least some conversation about her, um, application. But I can certainly put the request in for this meeting room to be used for the next ZBA meeting on 18th.
I think that's a good call. Yeah, definitely, sure.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, and if I might continue, the, I, I do agree with Mr. Maron on his mention of the risk factor. My reason for bringing up the data, or question of that, is the statement that this was an intentional violation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it, there's nothing to support that, and that's why I would like that as part of the...
I appreciate that, I understand that as well.
I appreciate that too, sir.
I know you're going around the horn, Mr. Chairman, but if I may, I don't want to cut off Miss Buship, she's creating trouble.
Are you, um, yep, I mean, I feel bad, I'm kinda like, we're trying to get through another odd situation here, and I'm trying to make sure everybody has their five minutes to talk about things that they need to, so...
I mean, I think what I was thinking has already been said, I don't think somebody's voice was left out, but I think in the interest of transparency, and on the off chance that someone wasn't hurt, it doesn't hurt to have the, the vote nullified, in my opinion. I mean, it's, it's probably redundant, but I don't think it hurts to rehear it and re-talk about it if, if on the off chance somebody wasn't hurt, that's all good.
Yeah. Mr. Maron?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, through the chair, to follow up with Ms. Coyle's thoughtful comments and the information you had provided. And the complaint itself, there's a statement here that intrigues me. There is evidence that two people were refused participation. Is, is there any, anything that we have on our side to validate that in fact that evidence exists? That two people were, were refused participation?
I don't, I don't know what inference is for the complainant. However, the, what I would expect that he's talking about is there were two callers. There was a caller one and a caller two, when you re-watch the meeting, that were on the screen that appeared to be on the screen but did not identify themselves, and they didn't respond when Chairman Tadrol.
Yeah, I think it was at least two different attempts where I said caller one, caller two. So I'm assuming that's probably, the complainant watching the meeting would probably gather that's where the interruption was.
No, I agree. Thank you for that. I mean, just because it's, it's, it's not trying to lend credibility, but, but I think if we're going to explore every avenue, I mean, there, there's a charge in here that essentially says that there's evidence to support two people not being there. I think that it's reasonable to suggest it's because two appeared on the screen and were not heard. Doesn't mean that, doesn't mean that it fully supports it, but that the risk is there. So I, I understand that. I do. I, I at this stage, Mr. Chairman, have come to realize that when I was younger, I didn't exercise pluralism all that much, because I expected that my opinion was the only one that counted. But as I, as I age, I, I do appreciate pluralism more, and so I, I get that people look at things differently. And so to be, to be objective by it, but I, I will take a very hard position on, on the charge of, of anything being intentional for either you or Ms. Roach. I think best efforts have been levied to do the right thing. We haven't addressed the, the fact that, not the fact that we took a vote to disband the remote participation last time, and I know that that, that's on our agenda this evening. But the fact that we did put, in my view, a legitimate statement on our agenda, that if there were technical difficulties, we were going to move forward and conduct the business. And I don't know that we ever got clarification from Mr. Henigan, although I will tell, of whether or not that met the sand measure of being good enough. But I would tell you, it was for me, and I have a great deal of respect for all the fellow board members, but it was good enough that Ms. Roach suggested that we put that. And so, you know, I for one certainly hope that neither one of you are taking into any consideration of stepping down or stepping back in this meeting.
No, thank you. I appreciate that, though. Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments or questions? I think before, I, I don't want to hold everybody up, but we've got to, you know, keep going things. So do I have a motion to, I think would be vacate the decision in the first hearing for 159 Malvin Road? And to vacate the decision to, for the virtual hybrid or the cancellation of the remote? Those are the two things that we have to address. So I think we should address the first one separately, there's a vote, and the second one separately, there's a vote, as we usually do. We'll move it along pretty quickly that way, if that's okay with everyone.
Yeah, so I think that we take Ms. Coyle's advice, and if we're going to vote to redo, we just redo the agenda of June 20th. I, I agree, but we don't want to do that hearing again.
Yep.
I'm going to make a motion to void the two hearings that we did on June 20th and to redo those hearings at the July.
A future meeting of our ability.
Okay, I was going to say.
Because if we missed the deadline.
Okay, so to redo the meetings at a future hearing. And yeah, in this room, which I think we've already made that request, so.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cussie?
Approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. Okay, so we have done that so far. So that would include, by, by the way, just for the record, for approving those, that also includes informing the parties on the town side and doing all those things that were requested as well and rescheduling those as the, I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah.
Okay. So with that being said, then, we have addressed, I believe the town is satisfied. We address all of the concerns for the open meeting law complaint before I move forward.
Yes, sir. One, one final action, if you, if you are comfortable with Attorney Henigan's letter that this is appropriate response.
Right. Before I proceed to that next step, though, that was a good point on the town side. For the record, I'd like the motion that he would do so kindly is to accept the town attorney's response to the open meeting law complaint to record.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cussie?
Approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. Okay. Now, we have to go back, since we are on to other business now, and that is a formal vote on the hybrid participation meeting format. So to be clear, I think we should have a recap on this if I don't, if you don't mind.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I may.
Do we have to redo it at the meeting?
No, I believe we discussed this further. This can be done tonight, correct?
So just for clarification, I think from Ms. Roach's motion, I think you're taking votes for redoing that meeting, correct? That would include the hybrid?
All right, so we're going to vote on the next one on the hybrid. I was going to vote on the hybrid this evening. But that's okay.
I can amend my motion.
No, that's okay.
Just the two hearings.
It doesn't really make a difference. We can do it at the next meeting. It's fine with me.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if, I appreciate the clarification, because I, I, through the chair, I, I understood it exactly the same way, that we need to take it forward. But, but Mr. Chairman, I, I would actually, for one, I'd be fine either way, but I for one would like to address that this evening, if we could, if Ms. Roach would be inclined to amend her motion and pull that one out so that we could address it and see if in fact we can address it this evening.
I am absolutely fine with that, so.
All right, so.
Okay, and just to be clear, I'm sorry, through the chair, we do have it on this agenda, so it is, you can discuss this. Because we didn't put it on the agenda, so I apologize. I, I just thought you were saying redo all the votes.
That's my error. So I am going to amend my formal motion that we cancel the, avoid the hearings that we did on June 20th to re-clarify that, to be that I would make a motion that we void the two hearings that were on the agenda, but not the formal vote by the board to, whether to continue or discontinue hybrid participation. We'll address that tonight separately and re-vote on that. But my motion stands corrected in that we will redo the two, and I don't have the addresses in front, I apologize, but we will redo the two hearings that were listed on the agenda from June 20th, 2024.
Okay. So do I have a motion to accept the amended motion?
I make Martian Cook second, Chairman.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cussie? Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush? Ms. Roach?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. Okay. So now we are on to the formal vote on hybrid participation meeting format, and I think to be clear, I'd like to go back to the beginning on this and also state that, you know, we had discussion back, and I believe the January, February meeting on this. It was, I was tasked by the board to bring it to the selectmen for clarification, because it technically sort of landed in their SOP range. When I went to that meeting, there was discussion that took place that basically said that they were not really the authority over this board to make that decision, even though it was in their SOP. However, they felt as though it was, it was important enough that they decided to go on the record and say that they would rather keep it. People, people mentioned some, you know, something like ADA or, you know, just the remote access, people running late for meetings, those types of concerns they had. I also brought the board's concerns in, where we deal with multi-billion dollar projects. You know, they have project deadlines, banking concerns, you know, people's livelihood when they're dealing with their homes. So I think we try to balance in between the concern for the applicant and the concern for the, the ability to access the meeting, at the very least. So is there any discussion for the members of the board that might want to talk about the remote hybrid meeting format?
No, I mean, I think we voiced that concern, or had this discussion at the last meeting that certainly was, is televised. I don't think the public joins in on our discussion anyway, so I don't, I think for me, the record stands of what we thought last time, and I'll make a motion if anybody's ready, unless anybody wants to talk.
Does anybody else want to discuss?
I would, I would, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would only make a brief comment that, and I would agree. It's been discussed before. The only, the only volume in, in comments that I can recall for remote participants has been a butter, in my view. I don't know that anyone else has, other than, you know, that during COVID, the applicants themselves. And so I don't think that there has been a great deal of discussion around it, so I would agree.
Okay.
I would be prepared to make, yeah, report motion.
Okay.
I also feel that during COVID, it served its purpose. We don't, we don't need to cause as much problems right now than anything for us, so I would agree to eliminate it.
Okay. Mr. Cussie? Oops, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired. I apologize.
No, I feel the same way, that, you know, we've done our talking.
Okay.
I think we've all, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure. I, I don't let everybody up.
We've had the discussion. I don't think it needs to be discussed.
We've beaten the dead horse, so to speak, I guess. Okay, so do I have a motion, uh, second for Ms. Roach's motion to vacate the hybrid participation meeting format?
I second.
All right. Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cussie?
Approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
I approve.
Ms. Roach?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
And I approve.
I vote to approve, so that will be the last of that. Okay. I don't believe we have missed anything on this agenda so far. Is that correct, town side? I just want to make sure. Okay, so I feel as though we have satisfactorily vetted this problem and did our best to correct it as, as we could, considering the fact that we are doing volunteers. I want to thank you all again, and I apologize, at least for my behalf anyway, and thank you all for coming here on your time off yet again, volunteering for the town, taking time away from your family on vacation, from your businesses, from your young ones, all of that. So really, I do generally, I really do, I appreciate that. You know, I all have a great amount of respect for all the efforts you put into this board, so.
Mr. Chairman, as always, I made it, you have thoughtful comments. I would, I would only ask you to retract the apology, because it's not necessary. I think that there have been best efforts by this board time and time again. We have not always agreed, but there's, I think, mutual respect on where everyone is coming from. And with the expertise, the sheer business expertise that we have around this table, I for one am honored to be able to participate with all of you. I, I, it's a privilege. I say, I say, I say cheekily at times that I'm just a volunteer, but it is an absolute privilege to sit at this table with this talent and, and try to volunteer with best efforts for the betterment of the talent. So I, from my view, there's just no apology necessary.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? All in favor? I think we can get away with that one at the end, right?